This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication, we'll come back from recess. Notice of the public hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic format on Wednesday, February 14, 2018, with a second notice provided on Saturday, February 17, 2018. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. There are two bills on for hearing this afternoon. One is Bill, was initially received by the Governor in a special session, and is Bill 1-2-S, which has been renumbered to Bill 245-34, as introduced by the Committee on Rules by request of immigrant law in Guam and the Governor of Guam in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam, which is an act to revise the business privilege tax from 4% to 6% by amending Title 11, Division 2, Chapter 26, Section 26, 202, and to dedicate the revenue to be collected from the expanded revenue stream to, one, the Guam Memorial Hospital for its operational modernization, two, the Department of Education to fund its capital needs, and, three, the General Fund of the Government of Guam to address the tax base erosion resulting from the passage of Tax Acts, Cuts, and Jobs Act of 2017. Also being heard today is Bill Number 244-34, which is an act to repeal Section 1631-1 of Chapter 16, Title 3, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section 26, 602 of Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Sections 1 and 2 of Chapter 6 of Public Law 34-42 relative to repealing the referendum on tax increases and raising the grocery receipts tax from 4% to 5% beginning April 1, 2018 until January 1, 2020, and reducing the fiscal year 2018 general fund appropriation of the Guam Legislature, the Office of the Finance and Budget, and the Office of the Governor, and freezing the Commendative Wage Act of 2014 until March 1, 2019, and to cite this act as the Fiscal Stabilization Act of 2018. I know that, having received the testimony in advance, I know that one of our first speakers today will suggest that maybe we should go on the road less traveled or a new... But I think it was President Truman who said, "There are no new ideas. There's only history that you did not know." And over the last six weeks, I've spent numerous hours with my iPad and watching PBS, trying to get new ideas on how to address this. I've watched on C-SPAN, I think just about every state of the state address by all the governors across the country, in the hopes of trying to find an answer as to how they're dealing with their loss of revenue as a result of the Trump Tax Act. I've even resorted to TED, T-E-D, the TED Talks, in the hopes of finding some innovative ideas. I've gone on YouTube and Googled "dealing with austerity," and surprisingly, I found a video that gave me an interesting idea. It's not even innovative. It's not my idea, and so I really should acknowledge where the idea comes from in Bill 244. Academically, I should not plagiarize, but I will confess to the fact that the ideas in Bill 244 were plagiarized from a YouTube video that I watched, and I'd like to play that at this time.
I don't have very good news about your government tonight. I've made some decisions so that public schools can stay open this year, the hospital can have medicine, and so those most in need do not have to suffer more than they already are. Our finance directors are continuing to assess the government's cash position for this fiscal year. Their preliminary views disclose that there is no apparent course of action that will result in positive 2011 cash balances, as reported by the prior administration to the Transition Committee. Sometime over the next nine months, we may quite frankly run out of cash. And if we do, we will not be able to pay employees, run the hospital, keep schools open, or help the needy. If we do not close this cash gap, those in need will suffer most. It will negatively affect mental health, COLA, the hospital, and nonprofit organizations like Catholic Social Services and Sanctuary. This is money to feed the homeless, shelter abused children, help victims of domestic violence, assist the elderly pay for their medication, and to aid families struggling with disabilities. We can't leave these people behind. We can't turn a blind eye and watch them suffer as the money runs out. And we also can't keep holding your tax refunds. Ray and I are keeping our promise and are taking immediate actions. We had to act today because I refuse to shut down the government or to have a mass layoff of teachers, police officers, doctors, and other professionals of the government. Ray and I are issuing further orders to cut costs. We are directing all agencies to reduce the cost of electricity by at least 10%. Paper reduction through greater use of digital communication, double-sided printing, and recycling will be mandatory. We will authorize audits of fuel expenses and the use of 24-hour vehicles. We will be investigating the consolidation of office space to save on rentals. And as of today, the HAY study is suspended. I cannot speak to the reasons our predecessors decided to implement the HAY plan based on the financial information we have before us today. All I know is that it was an empty promise. The government can't afford it, and now our hard-working government employees will have to shoulder the burden of that empty promise. These actions do not include further cost cuts. That will be made when agency directors submit their assessments this month. We expect further containment of spending through innovative ideas, and this includes the health insurance liability. We are looking at ways to reduce the cost of health insurance. There are legal issues that we must address first. We need to determine whether legally that this can be affected. To all the government employees, I'm asking you to understand why this must be done. We need to make sure that our neighbors and friends most in need of help do not suffer the most. I will restore the HAY study as soon as we can afford it, and I know that with other cost containment and restructuring initiatives that we will undertake, we can get this government back on track. In the meantime, we will lead by example. We've reduced the personnel costs at the Governor's Office alone by nearly 20%. We've consolidated positions, and we're doing without a lot. We're also reducing costs in every other way we can: paper reduction, printing, postage, power, and water. My staff and I will be adopting a public school to clean regularly so we reduce the budget burden on public schools and the mayors. The Lieutenant Governor also will be leading volunteer service projects. His Comps for Kids program will bring computers to classrooms. And he is calling on the private sector to join his beautification tax force to alleviate funding strains on public works, parks, and recreation, and the mayors. I want to thank my wife Christine and Ray's wife Notch for their volunteer efforts there. And finally, Ray is taking personal responsibility for the Guam State Clearinghouse so that we can ensure that we receive as many federal dollars as we can. We're very serious about fixing these problems, and there's a bright future ahead. But before we realize that future, we must make some adjustments so that we can meet our obligations to those who need the most. Thank you, and good night.
As you can see, the ideas that I put forth in Bill 244 did have some basis in how things were done in 2011. This week, we overrode a veto of the Governor to try to bring down the cost of health insurance. In Bill 244, we've discussed the HAY study, which was suspended in 2011 and wasn't brought back until we passed it in 2014. So those aren't new ideas. These were ideas that worked. It did stabilize the government in 2011 and 2012, and when we were strong enough, we did, or at least when we thought we were strong enough, we implemented the CWA. Because of these more recent tax cuts, we may not be in the condition to do it, so we're going to have to try to look at whether or not the stabilization plan of 2011 can also be the Stabilization Act of 2018, that government takes some cuts, some increases are made, and once we're stabilized, we can build a government forward and do as well as we did in the last couple of years. There are some rough times ahead, and that's the reason why the bill was proposed. I didn't want to claim that it was my idea. I have to give due credit where it's due and acknowledge where that idea came from. And with that, we will begin receiving testimony, Senator Klitsky, by tradition. Peter Kuaai, are you going to be testifying? And I understand that the DOE people are going to be having a meeting this afternoon, so I want to...Chairman Medjola and Mr. Fernandez. From DPW...Oh, Glenn Leon-Garrel. Clara Santos from Public Health. Is it Santos from Public...Oh, okay. We'll start with Senator Klitsky. And then we'll go down to this end and work that way.
Honorable Speaker B.J. Cruz and honorable members of the Committee on Appropriations, Adjudications, and Adjudications, I oppose Bill 34-244 and 245. An effective, efficient government that provides basic services in accordance with the rule of law on at least a break-even basis, the people deserve no less. We are now at a fork in the road provided by Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017 and really ought to take the one less traveled by. If we do, somewhere ages and ages hence, the people will say, "And that has made all the difference." The road less traveled by is paved with fiscal integrity and leads to an effective, efficient government that provides basic services in accordance with the rule of law on at least a break-even basis. If we take the other fork in the road, we'll be continuing down the same old road we've traveled for years and years. Do we want to present ourselves to the world as a resource-rich satrapi with the requisite limousines, armed traveling retinues, a palace, an ornate capital, a political nobility, a legislative body with 15 job holders, a class of professional politicians, a bloated government sector that enjoys surprise holidays by the grace of the Governor, and all the other trappings that come with public-supported nobility? Or should we aspire to a lean, people-oriented approach where the government exists for the people, not vice versa? A city of 165,000 folks is usually governed by a mayor and a city council of, say, 15 A few departments, plus a school district, a police force, fire department, a city jail, et cetera, and that's it. Population-wise, we're pretty much comparable to Oceanside, a typical city. Could the Oceanside government function if it received all the federal income tax paid by its residents and a chunk of that tax paid by Marines from Camp Pendleton? That's an admittedly simple comparison, but nevertheless, provocative because it's the deal we have. Notwithstanding our being on the receiving end of all that income tax, we're about $1 billion in the hole. That's, let's see, 9 zeros, $1 billion in the hole. Now, there's a lot of kvetching about unfunded mandates, second-class citizenship, which has been thoroughly debunked, by the way, but we still have a far better deal than any other states. In fact, some would urge the national government that our island become a state, while others trumpet the benefits of independence. Ask yourself, how can anyone be independent of anything with $1 billion worth of IOUs outstanding? By the same token, how feasible is the state of Guam which would drag another billion of debt into the union? Somewhere, ages and ages hence. We've been attempting to create the optics of the resource-rich satrapi since ever since, following the same old road we've traveled for years and years. I'm reading this testimony into the record in our slick, modern capital. That is, the Guam Congress Building. It's beautiful, for sure, but only the mauna kilu of the mauna kilu are accommodated here. The other 10 senators are forced to shelter in rental quarters at the most prestigious addresses in town. Go outside, stand on the front porch, and look to the right and admire our beautiful museum. It's an architectural masterpiece, even in the eyes of the most critical observer. Look up the hill in front of you, and you'll catch a glimpse, excuse me, a glimpse of what one resident governor named the Governor's Palace. So while the capital in which we gather in comfort today is a thing of beauty, our hospital is literally falling down around our ears. We can gaze at the modern widescreen TV monitors to see what the built-in speaker system is broadcasting, but we're told that the PA system in that same hospital didn't work at a critical A study of the plight of 10-year-old Aidan Gumatautau is instructive. Monday's Post reported how the hospital did not fix Aidan's broken arm, and in the words of the boy's dad, quote, "The hospital made $400-plus for absolutely nothing." And we're quick to say that public health, public safety, and education are our top priorities, but how many comps on the street are we short? Are our jail and prison modern, up-to-date, and safe? I don't think so. Safe like the three public buildings cited above? What about education? Simon Sanchez High School. Need I say more? Both bills before you today would raise what we now call the Business Privilege Tax to address what has been described as emergent circumstances caused by the national government enacting the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017. The message is that even though the tax cuts will put, or actually leave, more money in almost everyone's pocket, it's bad for the island. It's bad because if nothing is done, we won't be able to continue on the road towards establishing the optics that our island is a resource-rich satrapi. In order to do that, it's imperative that we increase the Business Privilege Tax. Now, the Business Privilege Tax, of course, is the most regressive tax that could be imposed. That means that the burden of the increased Business Privilege Tax will be borne by those least able to bear it. The emphasis so far in this hall has been on getting through the current emergency blamed on the Tax Cuts Act, when even the most casual observers would notice that we've been working on getting to where we are for a long time, following the same old road we've traveled for years and years. This would be a perfect time to not only address the instant emergency, but to determine how we got here and how we can avoid arriving here again. In other words, it's time for the road less traveled by, an efficient, as you were, an effective, efficient government that provides basic services in accordance with the rule of law on at least a break-even basis. Having rather laboriously created the Prolix map quest above, it's time to determine where Bill 234 and 235's GPSes direct us. That is, will we be continuing down the same old road we've traveled for years and years? Or the road less traveled by? Bill 245 uses 10 pages to tell us this, 4% to 6%. Section 4 tells us where the new money will go. .75% to GMHA, quote, "for its purposes, including but not limited to capital investment, operational requirements, or reserves." Uh-huh, that's really restrictive language. This incredibly loosely drawn language will have little to no impact on where the new BPT revenue actually goes. And .25% to the Department of Education for its capital improvement needs, same story. We see where cash goes once it hits the General Fund. The other 1% goes to the General Fund to address, quote, "the erosion of the tax base resulting from the passage of the Tax Cuts Act." That phenomenon, called cash management, will determine the use of all the, quote, "new money." Bill 245 raises our most regressive tax by 50% to plunk a large chunk of revenue in what is often referred to as the cash management process, the same old road we've traveled for years and years. Bill 244 suffers the same infirmity as 245. That is, it raises the Business Privilege Tax, but at least the increase is only 25% instead of 50%, found in 245. But the bill does at least step off the same old road we've traveled for years and years by reducing the legislature's budget by 10%. Same for the Office of the Governor. Section 4 of the bill freezes salary increases, and Section 5 stops above recruitment for teachers and some health workers. Plus, that section would involve the Civil Service Commission in an endeavor that has not been part of its portfolio since 2006. Check out 4GCA, Section 6205. Civil Service Commission is a tribunal for trying various kinds of cases. The Personnel Management Function went to the Department of Director of Administration and others in the Personnel Management Act of 2006 during the 28th Guam Legis...Let me see, who else was in that legislature? Bill 244 at least steps off the same old road we've traveled for years and years momentarily when it cuts the budget of the legislature. Glancing at the bills recently introduced shows that only Senators San Nicolas and Uggan are at least scanning the horizon for the road less traveled by. Finally, the decision this body will make, all the difference. What do you desire, ages and ages hence? Will people look back on your performance and say, "And that has made all the difference"? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Speaker, Chairman Medjola.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, senators. My name is Mark Medjola, and I'm the chairperson of the Guam Education Board. I'm here to proffer testimony on Bill 244-34 and Bill 245-34. Dear Speaker Cruz, thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the Guam Education Board on Bill 244-34, which you introduced, and Bill 245-34, introduced by Governor Eddie Baza-Caval. Last night, in our regular meeting, the Guam Education Board passed Resolution 2018-03 stating our position on both pieces of legislation. A copy of the resolution has been officially transmitted to you and to the Chairman of the Education Committee, Senator Joe Sinagasin, for your information and review. The Guam Department of Education, based on the estimated impact of the Federal Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017, must cut $19.6 million in the current fiscal year and even deeper in the next fiscal year. On February 6, 2018, Superintendent John Fernandez implemented a first round of budget reductions and savings, which outlined in a letter to GDOE employees and stakeholders. A copy of the letter has been attached. This round of reductions is estimated to address $12 million of the $19.6 million impact this fiscal year. As we work with the superintendent to review additional savings or reduction measures, we have been soliciting comments and concerns from our stakeholders to ensure we make we have been soliciting comments and concerns from our stakeholders to ensure we make these decisions thoughtfully and transparently. Our first village meeting is tonight at the Mariso Martyrs Memorial Elementary School at 6:00 PM in the school cafeteria. Our next meeting will take place on Monday, February 26, at 6:00 PM at Agada Johnson Middle School Cafeteria, and on Tuesday, February 27, at 6:00 PM at Liguan Elementary School. We welcome your presence at any of these meetings to listen to our stakeholders as we consider the options for further budget reductions. Regarding Bills 244-34 and 245-34, we fully and strongly support Bill 245-34, which not only provides a revenue solution to help mitigate the operational impact of the federal tax cut, but also provides a two-year investment worth a total of $30 million to keep our school facilities in good repair and safe, which is a priority of the superintendent outlined in his annual State of the Public address last December. Bill 245-34 still requires us to do work on reducing our budget, which we will do, but it also recognizes the need to address the building so that we can meet the needs of our students and employees. We understand that Bill 244-34 attempts to mitigate the operational impact of the federal tax cuts as well without the additional investment in our school facilities or the hospital. If the legislature ends up passing Bill 244-34, we strongly urge that you remove the rollback of the salaries that were adjusted as a result of the Competitive Wage Act of 2014. We prefer that you simply reduce our appropriations as needed and allow the GEB and the superintendent to work with our school communities to make the strategic reductions that will insulate our students, teachers, and classrooms from the impact of the federal tax cuts. Our employees, especially our teachers and our staff, work hard each and every day to support our kids, and it is our duty to figure out how to ensure that we support them in their work. Thank you again for this opportunity to testify today. Cezuas Mossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the committee. Dear Speaker Cruz, thank you for the opportunity to present testimony on behalf of the Guam Department of Education on Bill 244-34 and Bill 245-34. Our Chairman Mark Mendilla has already submitted to you with his testimony the GEB's position on both pieces of legislation, transmitted as GEB Resolution 2018-03. In addition, attached to that testimony as well is a copy of the February 6, 2018 letter that outlines the first round of budget cuts implemented by DOE to mitigate the impact of the Federal Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017 on local government revenues. Both bills are similar in one key aspect. Both propose a 1% increase in the business privilege tax to partially offset the impact of the federal tax cuts on government operations. For DOE, this means offsetting the $19.6 million that we were informed needed to be cut in order to make it through fiscal year 2018. Based on the analysis provided by OFB, both bills would result in DOE still needing to cut $9.5 million for 2018 and $2.7 million for FY 2019, based on that 1% BPT increase. Let me say that we support that increase, and we affirm that under both bills, we will still continue to work to align our budget with the new revenue environment in this fiscal year and the fiscal years to come. However, the bills differ in two key ways. Bill 244, while providing revenue to partially offset the impact on operations, also proposes to roll back salary increases that were implemented as a result of the Competitive Wage Act of 2014. We believe there's a simpler and better way to make those reductions if needed, reduce the appropriations level for our agency in line with the impact agreed upon by the governor and legislature, and allow us to continue to make the strategic reductions with the input of our school stakeholders to meet that appropriation level. We do not support rolling back the investment that the government has already made in our workforce, especially in our teachers and our school staff. Please do not cut the salaries of our hard-working employees, especially those whom we rely upon to care for and educate our kids on a daily basis. Bill 245 further raises the BPT by an additional 1% to support two key investments. One is a two-year investment totaling $30 million in our school facilities. The other is an ongoing subsidy for the public hospital. The investment in school facilities is an idea that I put on the table in my annual State of Public Education address in December, and that need has not gone away. School facility safety is not an area where we want to reduce investment. GDOE supports the governor's proposal to provide two years of funding to keep schools repaired and safe for our kids and employees, and for this reason, Bill 245 is a preferred legislation and has our support. We want to thank you, Speaker, and Governor Calvo, for introducing measures aimed at guiding us through the budget situation we face today. I believe that GDOE has taken a proactive, deliberate, thoughtful, and transparent approach to solving this problem for our school community, and we would appreciate your continued support in allowing us to work with our stakeholders to make decisions that will insulate our students, teachers, and staff as much as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Good afternoon, speakers, Speaker and Senators. My name is Peter Kaim, with Department of Public Works. I'm here to speak on the two bills that were passed. I am not in support of the bills. I'm actually against it. I've put a little bit over 32, 34 years in the government service, and I've actually rode that horse. I've seen many different legislation. I've heard of many changes, many improvements. But of all the changes and all the things that were mentioned, I hear this one now that you guys are proposing to go ahead and cut back and save the government. When I say save the government, I mean because of our financial debts and all of our so-called inability to pay and to support ourselves reflects back on us, those who work, those who actually support this government, that do the work, that do the dirty work, that get out there and make sure that everything is done in a way so that everyone is appropriated, everyone is met physically and mentally with the needs and the care that's owed them, that belongs to them. And because of that, I'm here to say that both bills don't work. And the reason why they don't work is because education, planning, everything that we've been doing hasn't worked. We're still here, and I'm 32 years sitting here, finally fed up with everything, fed up with all these stories that we have the ability to go ahead and do things, yet we're over here doing something that doesn't make sense. How are we going to survive? We've got 21. We went from senators that were 21 down to 15. Did it help? I'm not sure. Why am I here today? You answer that question. Senators, we have to look at something new. We have to find another avenue. We have to look for something that'll work, that's more practical, that can be applied, not guessed upon, assumed based on stats, on statistics, things that we have. Those who have intelligence, what does that help? It just confuses. It complicates things. If it works, work with it. If it doesn't, then let's see how we can improve it, how we can resolve these issues that are plaguing us. You know, we're still riding that same horse. I'm really happy that Mr. Sinagasin came up before me because, you know what? I wasn't too sure exactly what I was going to say here, other than express my feelings and understanding that we have to find other alternatives. We have to look for other avenues to resolve these issues. Speaker, I commend you for your thought and your commitment. What I'm looking for, Senators, is passion. I don't hear passion up here. I hear rules. I hear what I think. I hear what I want. I don't hear what we need. We need to improve our lives, and the only way we're going to improve our lives is to take up our roles in life. Please, if you're going to give an answer, give us a straight answer. Stop beating around the bush, man. I'm tired of that. If you can, then you try, or at least strive, because that's what we need here. We need responsible people. You have that in the departments. You've got people that's been struggling, been working. I believe my director said it well. We have good people. Well, guess what? Good people need to work good. They need to be supported well. We have teachers, educators. They need the same thing. Maybe we have to go back ourselves and look over our own budgeting, see what we can do to alleviate these issues. Maybe we weren't able to balance our books, or maybe we were just too top-heavy, if that helps. I remember hearing a statement made earlier today, and it was an old lady on the radio station, and all she said was, "Just stop doing those things. Let's get back to the basics." If that's what it takes, I understand that that doesn't mean that we're going to go back to the stone ages, but we're here already. Let us begin our process by looking at other avenues that we may be able to expand our thoughts, to bring ourselves to a better understanding of what we can do. You can't dissect things and break it down like a physician can and say, "This is how it's supposed to work," because we know that reality is, it never does. We're living in a day and age that things change. What was once before doesn't exist today. The things that worked last year didn't work this year, and it won't, because they change. Senators, I was kind of frustrated. I came up, and I noticed everybody all has a piece of paper all laid out in front of them, and they planned everything, and I agree, that's being professional. I'm being open and honest. That's all I'm being, and that's what I need you guys to do. That's what I expect from you guys to do as a voter, as a supporter, but I need your honesty also. If that's the absolute end result of what you can provide for us, then look at yourselves. Look at your family members. Look at your grandchildren, because that's what I see. I see my grandchildren. I look at this government, and I look at this island. What we do today is going to make the difference for tomorrow. That's the final verdict here. How we do it, how we execute ourselves, how we conduct ourselves is what's going to cause our reaction. I've got no right to stand here and tell you, to sit here and tell you how to do things. I don't. But I do have this. We need passion. I need you to come up and say, "I feel this. I understand what you're saying. I know where we're going with this, and I'm going to try." Our department has struggled for many years. We've had so many cuts within our system, yet we strive to continue on and to provide the services needed for the safety and wellness of the people of Guam. We continue to strive to do our best, but due to financial restraints, we continue to struggle. Of course, you won't hear about it because you're here, and before I can come here and share my thoughts with you, there's someone else out there that, that's what they have, they call them PRs. Well, guess what, man? I'm not a PR. I'm out here just to tell you straight out, we need the support. When you start to cut things out of the system, you're affecting not only us, but yourselves. You're hurting everyone else. I know that it's a struggle, that it's hard to find things, but please look into other avenues. We have to. We have to find other alternatives. And I know we can. I honestly know we can. Thank you again, Speaker. Senators, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Half-day Speaker Cruz and members of the Committee on Appropriations and adjudication. My name is Tom Nadeau. I am a government employee, Governor Guam employee, with the Division of Environment Health, Department of Public Health and Social Services. I thank you all for granting me this opportunity to voice my thoughts and ideas. I submit this testimony as a private citizen. Initially, I wasn't sure if I would be here, if I wanted to be here, but after hearing the concerns, fears of my staff, I felt compelled to come and provide this testimony. The fear that they have built for, for passing and become law weighs heavily on their minds, and I hope, as I give the testimony today, that it's not just simply my words, but also the words of the people that I work with every day, who give their passion, dedication for the work they do to serve the people of Guam. I'd like to start by saying I am not a financial manager or I'm some kind of economist, so I'm not going to pretend I know and understand all the implications of Bill 224, including the proposal to increase the business privilege tax. I am, however, an individual, along with my staff, who will be directly affected by the passage and implementation of Bill 244. Along with my colleagues at Department of Public Health and Social Services, we wish to speak in opposition to Bill 244. I'm sorry, my apologies, 244. As one of the division heads of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, we are fully aware, I am fully aware, of the financial challenges the Governor of Guam is facing with the passage of the recent federal tax code. We are already feeling the impact at the department and the services that we provide to the people of Guam. And while we are appreciative of the efforts you all are putting forth to address this matter, reducing the salary of GovGuam employees through the freezing of the Competitive Wage Act of 2014, as proposed in Bill 244, is not the way. The anticipated shortfall in government coffers is not just a government problem, but it's everyone's problem, since we all utilize government services in some way or another, and we all experience the consequences of this problem. Therefore, it should be shared responsibly among the entire population of Guam. Instead, Bill 244 is placing much of the burden on the backs of government employees. At least with the increase of the business privilege tax, the load can be equally shared by everyone, as we all would end up paying more at the register, I presume, as the cost will get likely passed down to consumers. As I mentioned, I'm not an economist. This is just what I suspect. Reducing the salaries of government employees to the pay plan of 1992 is not just. We are no different from workers in the private sector. We do pay taxes. We also expect our government to be efficient, and we have our own financial obligations. I can't understand why the cutting of salaries of government employees is deemed an acceptable option. Too often, we are collectively labeled as being lazy, incompetent, overpaid, which is, I think, is the worst. And that seems to be, and I'd be wrong, that seems to be the reason or justification in reducing our salaries, as proposed in Bill 244. I personally do not know every employee of every agency, but I do know the Division of Environment Health, where I work, and I can confidently say that they are nothing like the negative stereotypes that are labeled to us as government employees. The staff of Division of Environment Health regularly work more than their regular 40-hour required hours a week without overtime. The inspectors and others of the division have worked evenings, early mornings, late at night, holidays, even on Christmas Day. No overtime paid for us. We're not asking for it. We just do what's necessary. That's what we do. No overtime paid for us. We're not asking for it. We just do what's necessary. That's what we do. I hear comments from the public and the media that this government is bloated. If that's true, I do increase, which I fully support and still do to this day. And the department still went out to add further requisites and required them to possess professional certifications, total of four, that is, to, for them to retain jobs, which I still support to this very day. If it was not for the Competitive Wage Act of 2014, I don't know if we would have the staff we do now, which is far below the number necessary to meet public demands and expectations. They and the other employees of division are competent, hardworking, and far from being overpaid. The employees of Division of Environment Health do their best in their jobs and continue to work as civil servants, not because, because we all enjoy what we do and we do get satisfaction from helping and serving the community, the public. However, the proposed legislation in Bill 244 is surely making it difficult for us to maintain that job satisfaction. After all, as much as we love our jobs, we still need to get compensated accordingly. It's already difficult to attract and keep good employees. And reducing the salary of employees to the level that was adopted over 25 years ago will make it nearly impossible to entice, to keep outstanding workers. It is not uncommon to see and hear my staff being criticized for the work they do, or work they don't do, as government employees. Too many people outside the government were just one of many employees of GovGuam without names, faces. We're just numbers to them, and feel that that is a sentiment being expressed in Bill 244. But we do have names, we have families, and lives that are filled with personal obligations and responsibilities. We have loans to pay, children to feed, parents and grandparents to care for, just like everyone else in the community. Just last night, I had received a text from one of my employees who expressed fear and sadness in Bill 244. She said, and I paraphrase here, quote, "I have been in public health for five years, and I plan to continue working for Governor of Guam for many years. I have witnessed firsthand that GovGuam employees are hardworking, and most of them are, most of them go unrecognized. The implementation of the Competitive Wage Act lifted my morale and happiness, allowed me to support my son during times of financial hardship, which included a divorce, and allowed me to regain my self-confidence of raising my child alone. I finally have a job that I love. But if Bill 244 gets passed, I don't think I'll be able to stay, since my financial situation may force me to seek employment elsewhere." This was written to me by a single-parent mother who was once on public assistance while being employed still, but now earns a livable wage. This is just one of many stories in my Division of Environmental Health. And the impact it will have, the impact from passing Bill 44 cannot be simply put into words. I don't have the answers to fixing the financial crisis of this government this island is facing. As I stated earlier, I'm not an economist. I am a biologist by education. I'm an environmental practitioner by employment. I'm not a financial wizard. But I'm trying to understand the reasoning of Bill 244. Because if it's implemented, it will cut our salary, increase the business privilege tax, which I suspect will then increase the price of goods we buy, therefore raising the cost of living with a salary that is based on compensation structure from 1992. It simply does not make sense to us. We're already earning less than our counterparts in the U.S., and let's face it, the cost of living on Guam is pretty high. It's my understanding that there is a competing proposed legislation of Bill 245-34 that is being endorsed by the governor to address our financial situation. Similar to Bill 244, I do not know if it will resolve all of our problems. But to my staff and I, it seems like a better option, considering that the burden will be spread among everyone, not simply to GovGuam employees. Thus, we ask that Bill 245 or any other improved revised proposal be considered. Thank you. And once again, thank you once again for allowing me to provide this testimony. Don't include Nastia Zuzmasi.
Thank you very much.
Hafeday Speaker Cruz and honorable members of this committee. My name is Glenn Leon Guerrero. I'm the Director for Department of Public Works. I would like to thank the Guam Legislature for the opportunity to provide comments on both Bill 244 and Bill 245, both of which seek to address the estimated reduction of tax collections as a result of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017. The following two paragraphs are a quick synopsis of both bills. Bill 244 seeks to address the impending shortfall by repealing the referendum on tax increases and increasing the business privilege tax from 4% to 5% beginning April 1, 2018 until January 1, 2020. Number two, reducing the general fund appropriations for the Guam Legislature, the Office of Finance and Budget, and the Office of the Governor by 10%. Number three, implementing a freeze on the Competitive Wage Act of 2014, beginning March 5, 2018 until March 1, 2019. Bill 245 addresses the impending shortfall by increasing the business privilege tax from 4% to 6% and dedicating the expanded revenue stream for the Guam Memorial Hospital and its modern operations and modernization. Number two, the Guam Department of Education to fund its capital needs. And number three, the projected reduction of the general fund revenue collections as a result of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017. I particularly wanted to discuss or Section 4 of Bill 244, freezing of the Competitive Wage Act of 2014. Although I can appreciate the goal of avoiding payless paydays, or implementing furloughs, or layoffs, or rolling, or the rolling back of, the rolling back of employees' income to 2014 levels will create more negative outcomes than positive. We will cause undue hardship for many, many households. The most obvious negative outcome would be the degradation of the morale of this government's most precious resource. Think of the message you're sending. On the one hand, you want to raise our taxes, while on the other hand, you want to, want us to endure this increase with lowered wages. The feedback I'm getting from the rank and file from my department is not to support this bill. Based on the aforementioned concerns, DPW is in support of 245 and not in support of Bill 244. This is what I really want to say. Throughout today and for the next 10 days, or however you keep the testimony open, you will hear ideas. Some good and some not so good. Of course, if you ask my Uncle Bob, it's all good. His ideas are all good. After listening to all the testimonies for both these bills, you have a heavy task of weighing the pros and cons between the two and passing legislation, which ideally allows our government to avert a crisis. It is my hope that, given our current situation, which is potentially dire, we see this as an opportunity to provide long-term solutions, which not only define our, which not only define our government, but also elevate it to what it can become. That is a government of which we can all be proud of. Each department, agency, organization has within its resources ways which we can better utilize and maximize. Let me offer a suggestion which applies to DPW. Its principles can be applied government-wide. DPW's main compound consists of 20 acres of prime real estate located in Upper Tumon. At one time, I was told that Department of Public Works was staffed with over 1,000 employees. Today, our staffing is 300-strong. Additionally, approximately 200 of our employees work in bus operations and are deployed throughout our 13 bus satellite stations. Our department's location is not critical to its, our department's location is not critical to its mission, and thus can fulfill its duties at a smaller, even remote venue. My proposal is to lease this compound out long-term and have the winning tenant build a new, smaller, fit-for-purpose facility, DPW facility. There should be enough proceeds from at least this 20-acre site to cover the operational costs of DPW for the sections that do not have a specific fund, such as the territorial highway fund. This proposition can be long-term and self-sustaining. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm free to answer any questions you may have. God bless you.
Thank you very much. I'm sure your Uncle Bob is saying that was an excellent idea. Amvin.
Good afternoon, Speaker Cruz and honorable members of the 34th Guam Legislature. My name is Armilin Luhan. I am with the Division of Accounts of the Department of Administration. This testimony that I'm about to give is a representation of the opinions of 75% of the employees of the Division of Accounts, whose signatures are included with this testimony and a copy of which was emailed to you sometime this afternoon. Hafeday, thank you for the opportunity to submit our testimony on Bill 244-34. We are providing testimony as individuals employed at the Division of Accounts and do not represent the office as a whole. We do not support Bill 244-34. We, individual employees of the Division of Accounts, have survived numerous attacks from both within and outside the government of Guam. Yet, we remain strong and steadfast on our fiduciary duties to the people of Guam. Because we see the reality of our finances, we are compelled to submit as a whole testimony against Bill 244-34. First, the purpose of Section 4 is actually counter-active to generating revenue. With opinions such as the one from the former Chief of Police and Homeland Security Advisor Frank Ishizakis, which was, I'm sorry, Guam Pacific Daily News on February 20, 2018, it is evident of the lack of true understanding of how governmental accounting is. We cannot agree with his opinion. Quote, "I want to commend Cruz for introducing Bill 244. We understand the impact of Trump tax reform and its benefits for the workers. Because employees and retirees will make home, will take home more money, they will spend more as well. The unfortunate impact of the new tax law is that GovGuam will collect fewer income tax dollars, but will collect more in business privilege taxes," unquote. Because rather than allow the public servants to utilize the savings in their income because of the President's Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, Bill 244-34 restricts the public servant from contributing to revenue collections by spending less. His opinion does not make sense. Section 4 only aggravates the demoralizing effect to not only our division, but also those of the line agencies under the executive branch. Additionally, media statements of rollovers increase the aggravation. Because of disparity created by laws such as the 40% law enforcers increase, the separation of wage scales by autonomous agencies, and the possibility of exodus to ineffective agencies by the line agencies' public servants. While the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act reduce deductions, it would make more sense to shift the loss of income taxes by increasing the business privilege tax temporarily. Remember, there are tax-on-tax, state and federal, on the mainland U.S., such as combined sales tax up to 10-plus percent. We attached a copy of that as well. The logic is the public will use their additional income to purchase more services and/or products. This is simple balance. Terminate Bill 244-34. Regards, your public servants. I would like to add my personal, which is outside of this testimony, just from hearing from the few members that spoke today. I am fairly new to the government, and I heard the words "passion," "hard-working individuals." I myself is new here. And I have worked with the pirate sector for many, many years, with over 20, 30 years of experience. I am a graduate of the University of Guam, a merit scholarship recipient. And to roll back my wage to what it was 2014, and I've only been here less than five years, is what I was making when I graduated from college. Is that really fair? I look at myself today, and I read this bill, as well as the governor's, and I think to myself, and I tell this to not only some of you who I know personally, but to a lot of my colleagues outside of the government. Why am I working for the government of Guam? Why do I stay here when I could make more somewhere else? I've been offered positions elsewhere, which I could be making more. But I look back at it, and my thing is that I'm here for the people. Truly, I am here. Because money was not a motivating factor, but if this passes, I might just have to look at other avenues. I think we, as a body, government of Guam, the government is basically us. And we have to be passionate about what we do and why we're doing it. And if you reduce the salaries, it's not only gonna affect my division, but I think the Department of Education, Memorial Hospital, all the essential agencies. Do we really want to do that? I'm not one to play the political game. I've always said I don't like politics, but I felt compelled to come here today. I was very strong about that, because I just didn't feel it was right for anyone to take that salary, not just mine, but for those who are hardworking. I have a few individuals who have just been recently hired in our division, which I am so thankful. These are new individuals. They're fresh. And they could work really well with this government, in this department. However, if this happens, they just might say, "Hey, you know what? I could be making some more money somewhere else. Why would I want to stick here? Where is this gonna lead this government again?" I think we have fresh ideas. They have, they're smart. They're graduates of our own university. And I think you need to really look at why we even do this. We don't need a Band-Aid fix. We should have something that says we need to do this permanently, so we don't have to come back in the next two years or whatnot, to sit here again and do a public hearing to say, "By the way, we did something wrong." I've heard, I have many colleagues out there who I've met and who are very, who are experts in what they do. And some of them are retired, and who come back to the government of Guam for why? Because why? They're doing it for the people, because they want to give back to the government. And for me, that is my thing, is I'm giving back to the government, and that's why I am here. And that's the only reason why I'm here, and also to help represent those that have the same views as I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Santos.
Hafeday Speaker. Hafeday Speaker and Senators. I'm here on my behalf as a personal citizen. And basically, I work over at Public Health, Division of Public Welfare. And so what I want to testify on is basically the rollback or the cut in the salary. You know, basically, I agree with her and everyone else that the salary shouldn't be cut or rolled back due to that, you know, we as employees earn that, basically. And, you know, for me, in my personal opinion, I'm living paycheck to paycheck. And so that's kind of like hard. If you turn around and you cut back everyone's salary, I mean, can you imagine? With the high cost of living right now, it's gonna be a burden. I might as well just turn around and say, "Quit, go find a job, or go apply for food stamp and Medicaid." I mean, that's what you guys are turning around and saying to people who have families that work hard. We don't matter. But there's a way. I mean, if you guys really want to save money, you gotta look at avenues. You gotta turn around and say, "Look at our programs. Look at our local programs. What are 100% locally funded? Revamp it so that it works for those who are U.S. citizens, those who are permanent aliens. Look at those. And then for those government agencies that are leasing or renting, try and fit them into their GovGuam buildings. That would save money. And as far as, you know, cutting salary, is that across the board? Does that, you know, go for senators, legislatures, I mean, you know, judiciars? Everyone? Is that included in everyone? Because if it is, then, you know, go for it. But one of, several of my coworkers had, had asked me to throw it in, in terms of telling you guys. Why don't we do that, thank God it's Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, where we go back to that 32-hour work? Where our, you know, salary doesn't get touched, but we only work 32 hours. So I'm hoping that you guys can find a way, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for this panel? Otherwise, I'll excuse them. Senator Nelson?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank all of you for coming out today, and thank you for encouraging. out today, and thank you for encouraging us to speak honestly and open. This is my first term, so many times it's a challenge, you know, to really say what I think. But no, I understand the situation that we are facing, and I don't agree to the rollback. But I do have a question for the Guam Education Board Representative, or maybe the Superintendent. Earlier today, we received a, as part of Mr. Lester Carlson's testimony from BBMR, we received several attachments. And in this attachment, according to the circular that he put out, DOE is to, I guess, agencies will have to respond with, DOE was responding with a cut in $18 million in operations. So that means, does that mean teacher salary? Where's this $18 million coming from?
So, right now, we have, well, the estimated cut is $19.6 million that we're supposed to reduce.
I'm sorry?
So the pro-rata share reductions is targeted at 19.6.
Yes.
So at this point, we've implemented around one of cuts to get us to $12 million. We have additional options that have been shared with the board, but have not yet been further acted upon until we complete our community meetings, which will be complete next week.
So you-
So we are targeting at a four, we're trying to get to that number.
The 19.6 or the 18 million?
It's, we were informed 19.6. I'm not privy to what they shared with you this morning, so I'm not sure exactly what they're showing.
Okay, so I'll get you a copy, Mr. Superintendent, but it says that DOE is going to be less $18 million than it was for operations. And so, I did read the resolution from the Education Board where it does mention $19.6 million for your pro-rata share. But I was wondering, where's it coming from? What are you taking away?
Okay, so right now, in the-
The $12 million, I guess, that you-
Right, so around one, it's delineated in the letter that's also attached. This is the February 6 letter that was sent to all employees. And a lot of this is really trying to forego spending that has not occurred yet. A lot of it is deferring expenses, pushing them out, and in the event that we can't resolve them, you know, may put them at risk in the future. But things such as the delay of the expansion of our pre-kindergarten, we were targeted to expand pre-kindergarten classes in five more schools. That's about $1 million. We put that in abeyance until we find a solution. So that's $1 million. We've renewed and are pushing on further reduction on utility consumption at all schools and facilities. We are extending our central office hiring freeze, which has been in place since last March. That central office hiring freeze, we were anticipating, you know, potentially relaxing, but in light of today's circumstances, we've extended it, and we've also included a freeze on assistant principal positions. We are limiting overtime only to facilities' work, and that has to be done outside of regular school hours. We are, I'm just going to look at the, delaying the onboarding of substitutes for the coming school year, and putting a hold on contracts that we're in process, and trying to renegotiate the scope of services for, of some of our high-dollar contracts to see if we can get 10%, 15% savings on those contracts. And then, and then also, we are looking for, in that same letter you've seen, we've asked for flexibility to use some of our special appropriations to bridge the gap, as well as put some revenue enhancement ideas on the table. So that letter, based on our, and we keep scrubbing the numbers, trying to get to the most conservative, cautious amount, which is, give me the lowest number. Don't give me an optimistic number. We're costing out at $12 million. So I've informed the board that we have additional reductions that we have to make if we don't see any relief. But because the deeper we go, the more painful it may get, the more impact we may have, my recommendation was that we discuss with the board and get more input from stakeholders to make sure that we are not leaving anything on the table that we haven't thought of. So we have collected through emails, through online surveys, some preliminary information, but we're going to go out to Maritzo and Agudan and Liguan over the next week to have face-to-face meetings of stakeholders who might want to share their concerns or ideas.
Thank you, and thank you for voicing that, for the people that are watching. I know this went out to your GDOE employees, but at least the people who are watching, who are not the employees, or perhaps the parents and members of the community are aware, this is what you're doing. One more question, Mr. Chair, and then I'll be done. Page 2 of 2 in Guam Education Board Resolution 2018-03. Starting from line 10, whereas Bill 245-34, in addition to providing support overall for governments of Guam operations, includes a two-year dedicated funding stream of 0.25% of the BPT increase to address significant facility needs of GDOE, providing an estimated $30 million over the two-year period to help fix. How did you come to that $30 million two-year period? Because this morning, we were seeing a calculation of $24.7 million in the attachment that BBMR gave us.
So, right now, the attachment that I know, well, okay, again, part of it is just sharing the information-
I'm sorry, it's $9.7 million.
So, no, the, so, the way that I understand the bills to work is that there is a portion of both bills that are dedicated to an operational offset. In that, in those, if that dedicated 1% BPT increase, then it would leave us with $9.7 million to gap to close. What the governor's bill does is, in addition to that 1%, sets aside a dedicated 0.25% dedicated to facilities, which would generate $30 million. But I assume, I guess until further discussion, that that's reserved for, you know, facility investments, capital improvements. So I'm not sure whether we count that against the gap, or we, or that's going to be reserved specifically for facility work or CIP work.
Perhaps the board can clarify this, maybe send us some clarification later on to really help us understand this $30 million number. Thank you.
Okay, just to clarify, so I did get, I mean, our staff have been working with OFB as well, so their estimate of the 0.25% of 1% is $14.9 million.
Yes, it's 1/4 of 60, which is 15.
Right, so 14.9 is the-
But for the rest of this year, it won't be-
That's right.
Right, right.
So the numbers aren't driving, is what I'm saying. So we'll just get together later on and get clarification.
Well, good Senator, I believe the Senator in Education has called for a roundtable.
Yes.
And so, definitely, we'll prepare and have information necessary. But I do know that our board has focused on three areas, that the pillars of our focus, which is the safety and health of our students, our curriculum, and the facilities. And I just want to reassure the public, and that's the reason why we're going out there in terms of our messaging as to how we're going to go through this painless, I mean, this painful process. And the superintendent said, the math is easy, but the consequences are hard. So as we lay out all these issues before the community, we want to let them know that there are going to be some consequences, some tough issues. And there's some administrative stuff that the superintendent can handle, and we left that to him. But when it comes to the board's review of the big challenges that's facing us, we're going to engage with the community, and we're going to allow them the opportunity to come in and talk about their community schools.
Yes.
I mean, we received communication from the good Senator regarding Effki Sanchez and some of the closure of that school. That is an option that, overall, is not just one particular school that we're looking at, but those are things we have to look at because the nature of the financial situation within the government. And so, we understand, and we want to ensure our employees that we're going to minimize the impact as much as possible in the classroom. The curriculum and the education of our children is really, really important. And we talk about passion. Our teachers are passionate. My wife's a teacher, wakes up 4:00 a.m. every morning to prepare to go to school. And so, the dedication from our teachers, and I have children in the public school system, ma'am, so I know that our employees. So I just want to make that point very clear, that when we go out there and we start listening to our community, we're going to take everything into consideration, just like you are. But we will continue the dialogue with our Oversight Committee Chair and with the Speaker, and we'll continue to have the dialogue. And when we flush out the accurate numbers, then we'll roll out all that information so that the department and our employees can brace themselves for the impending cuts that's going to occur within the government. But at this point in time, we need your support. We need the support of the department. There's a lot of people that are unsure of the future, and that's a very tough thing to do, wake up in the morning, unsure whether or not you're going to be able to make ends meet. So I know my colleagues support the superintendent, and that is the reason why we're going in a strategic and a very deliberative way on how we are going to address the budget shortfall within the department. So I just want to make that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, and yes, please make sure that the numbers are accurate and factual, because every dollar does count.
Yeah, ma'am, we understand. The budget is a planning document, and sometimes it's a moving target. We, based on whatever information that is provided to us, I do know that we scrub the numbers. Thank you.
Yeah, but the number's significant, the difference.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Was there anybody else under the white desk question?
In, you haven't said it today. You said you've got some further actions that are being explored, and you will discuss those when you've got, after your hearings with the public. So I'm just wondering, does the public know that you are in, I mean, are you intending to cut, close schools? And does the public know which schools, and are they going to be able to give input on that? Or you're going to listen to them first and then decide, and pretty much that's it?
No, ma'am. This is, this community engagement is giving the opportunity for the community. We're hitting all areas of the island, and we're trying, and this thing-
But what is the proposal before them that they're supposed to comment on?
Based on the budget cuts, the superintendent is going to basically lay out what we've shared with you folks in terms of what he's taken to close the gap with the budget shortfall, and then what are the ideas that are out there. You've heard some testimony here from these folks about some ideas on to improve our, to bring revenue into the department. We've proffered some of that. The superintendent and his state of education proffered some of those proposals. And so, when we go out there to the community, we're going to allow them to also share what-
So there are no new proposals that you're expecting them to give you testimony on? Only the ones that you've put into your letter? Is that correct, Mr. Superintendent?
We've been receiving, we have sent out letters to all the stakeholders within our board, the mayor's council.
Is that the same letter that we're looking at?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. That's what I'm asking. We have these in front of us. Everybody knows about it because you put it in writing. But the superintendent said there's also $6 to $7 million more that they might have to cut, and I'm just, and that they're going to have public hearings to hear from the stakeholders. But I just want to know, do they know what, where you're planning to get the $6 to $7 million?
If I could, I mean, as the chairman said, there's some moving targets here. So I expect that tonight, we'll be able to kind of update the general community who may not have heard or may not have had the full information that we're trying to get out to them. We want them to understand, instead of reading it just only in the media, you know, about how we're going through the process, where we are today, what decisions, and what kinds of ideas we might be considering going forward. This is the opportunity for us to brainstorm. I mean, I'm sure we'll update them on the hearing today, for those who may not be able to catch up, and let them know that we came here today to give testimony on what that testimony was about. And then, anything that they want to add to the table, we want to make sure that they're involved in the process. So I'm sure that there are many, you know, constituents out there who are going to be concerned about school closures, concerned about these bills, concerned about maybe the cuts that we've already done. I think the issue for us is to ensure that we are hearing those concerns. I want to make sure that when we make decisions, we have an opportunity to present it, and also to not present them in a vacuum, but to know that these are the priorities for our families that are out there in the community, and that's why we're going to be out there. So there won't be any fully cooked proposals we're going to be unveiling, but we definitely want to make sure that they feel free to come and let us know what they care about.
All right, thank you. Well, the only reason why I keep asking you the same question over, because the bills we're looking at, and we need to make a decision on, or what the choices we're being presented with at this moment, are that one bill is to cut DOE by $18 million, give $9 million, and raise taxes, and give $9 million of the increased taxes to DOE for facilities. But I guess I wanted to know, are you considering closing schools? And are, because I've heard that in the news. So if you are, I just wanted to be clear. You're going to agree that we're going to close schools and implement these cost-saving measures if you get the $9 million for new facilities or improvement to the existing facilities, I guess is the plan?
Right. So I think part of this is, and I guess we go through this process, we want to just be clear about what we're saying. I think the way you presented the bill was not the way we understood it. So the way we understand the bills is that Speaker Cruz would raise the BPT by 1%, and that would help us get through, and as Senator Nelson said, it's either $9 to $10 million of our cut. And we would still have a gap to, we would still have a gap that would need to be closed of about $9.7 million. That's the same situation with the governor's bill, which would increase the 1%, 1% BPT increase to address the operational offsets. Now, the additional money for facilities is treated as a, you know, above that 1%, is a 0.25% increase for two years that would generate what we're considering to be reserved funding only for facilities. So we still have the operational issues to get through. It won't be a matter of, you know, I mean, I'm just trying to separate the facilities issue.
$18 million.
Yeah, we still have a gap to close. We're going to close that. So I guess, short of the legislature's actions, we're prepared to ensure that we have a balanced budget. So our targeted effort is to get to that $19.6 million estimate that was in the BBMR circular that was given to us to work from, and to continue those cuts until such time as there's a solution. The issue is that it's hard to make those cuts once you get to a certain point. So I've got $12 million of cuts that I think we can absorb for the near term. To get to $7 million, the $7 million more means that this legislature has not acted on a bill to give us additional revenue, and that means that the schools have to absorb that cut. And that's what we want to make sure that our stakeholders know. This is the task at hand. You have a board and superintendent who are taking it seriously. We want you to know their consequences. And we want to be able to share that with everybody as you make those decisions. So if school closures comes up because we just can't cut anymore until we get to that option, then we will let everybody know that that's the option. But that's part of our deliberate, transparent, thoughtful process of going from A to Z, and that's why we'll be out in the community for the next week.
I'm just going to ask you, just to take a look at the BBMR letter that they sent to us this morning, and because we're being asked to agree to $18 million operating cuts in DOE, but then to raise taxes and give DOE $9 million to, for their facilities. But I do very much appreciate the cuts that you have already proposed in your letter, and I want to thank you. Those are very concrete, and I want to thank you very much.
If I could also point your attention to, and I don't know if the speaker may present it as well, we did send a letter also upon meeting with the board and discussing our first round of cuts, that proposed a number of items that we could use the legislature's help with as well beyond these two bills. So some of those involve the authority to leverage some of the assets that we have. So we talked about the PD property. We talked about the T's in headquarters. We talked about additional T's and properties that we could potentially leverage for further savings for the department. We've asked for other items in there. So I wanted to just let you know that we're not just focusing on these two bills. We've got our work to do to reduce our budget and right-size our budget in line with the revenue situation, but we've also put other ideas on the table that we could use your help with. So if you'd like us to share that letter with you, we can do that right after this meeting.
Thank you. Senator Stavris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Klitschke, looking over your testimony, you did make a comparison to Oceanside, California. Is Oceanside, California, I'm assuming? Oceanside, California, you made a general comparison with Guam. You know, I appreciate the simple approach to it. I think it says here, population-wise, we're pretty much comparable with Oceanside, a typical city. We should include and keep it simple with departments such as the school system, police force, fire department, and a city jail, and keep it simple. Is that accurate to your statement and your testimony? And I just wanted to kind of delve into that a little bit, because that's actually been brought up by many individuals when comparing us to municipalities and cities. And I've actually done this study, and just for the record, I just want to place a couple of facts, if that's okay, and it should go really quick, Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me. Population of Oceanside, California, 175,464. Population of Guam, around 162, 896,000 individuals, so definitely comparable in size of population. I just want to compare taxes, though. So currently, Guam's taxes are 4%. Oceanside, California, 7.75% on the sales tax. Land tax in Oceanside, California, 1.179%, and on Guam, it's 0.29%. Now, understanding a simple approach, many of our citizens don't understand that Guam has different responsibilities, not because we're a bloated government, but because we are of a different status with different responsibilities. And I just want-
This is a long question, Senator.
Yes. Yes. And so, what I want to get into is you're proposing, if we were to draw comparative, comparison to Oceanside, California. I just wanted to ask a question, Mr. Speaker. You're proposing that we get rid of the Supreme Court, Superior Court, Department of Labor, Department of Corrections, funding to UOG, GIDA, GVB, Department of Trauma Affairs, BSP, BBMR, and any other things, items that- BSP, BBMR, and any other things, items that would be either state, uh, state-funded, I'm, I'm assuming, because that would bring us in comp, comparison with Oceanside, California, which does have higher taxes, um, overall. And I'm just trying to understand your statement here, and, and if we were to shrink the government, um, I, I'm, I'm curious if that's your proposal. We do that by removing all of those responsibilities from the government of Guam, not only in statute, but the Organic Act and federal law.
I wonder if you have the same copy of my testimony that I have?
Let, let's just, we'll, you, we can deal with that later.
Okay. One, one final point for the record, Mr. Chairman, one final point. The per capita, GDP per capita in Oceanside, California is twenty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-two, and on Guam, it's thirty-five thousand, four hundred sixty-one. So the only thing I wanted to clarify here is that when, if, if we're going to make a statement for the public and compare us to a city or municipality, that the facts need a, need a mirror up, because it, this is a difficult situation, Senator Klitsky, and I, I don't want to mislead the people by drawing comparisons that are not accurate at all.
Then don't do it.
Yeah.
Thank you both. I'll excuse this panel. Thank you very much. Shalom.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chief Justice, you're recognized.
I would like to recognize the members of management who are here today, primarily to answer questions if need be, but also to point out how important as, to the, this branch is the situation as the rest of the government. Mr. Christopher Bedasi is our controller, John Lozama, the administrator of the courts. Judge Arthur Barcinus is a member of the judicial council. Robert Cruz is a deputy administrator. Also, we have Christina Baird, who's a staff counsel, and Sean Kumitato, also a deputy administrator. Hafaday, and thank you for the opportunity to testify on Bill Two Forty-four Thirty-four, or the Fiscal Stabilization Act of two thousand eighteen, that proposes to repeal sections of public law, thirty-four forty-two. The judiciary is a co-equal branch of the government that is responsible for critical services in our community. The General Appropriation Act appropriated approximately thirty-four million dollars to the courts for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. The judiciary has expended this money responsibly in carrying out its mandate. Receiving our scheduled monthly allotments allows us to operate in as efficient manner as possible during any fiscal year. However, during the first quarter of this fiscal year, the executive branch withheld a significant amount of cash from the scheduled allotments, in excess of three million dollars. As a result, the judiciary implemented a number of cost-cutting measures to mitigate the impacts resulting from the lack of allotments from the executive branch. On October first, two thousand seventeen, except for two or three critical recruitments, we suspended recruitments. We suspended implementation of the electronic monitoring program, as we informed you, Mr. Speaker. We reduced court-appointed attorney fees and the alternative public defender contracts. We've reduced locally funded travel, implemented the quality time program, and most recently have frozen all vacancies branch-wide. In addition, we had been considering deeper cuts arising from the impacts of the recently passed Federal Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of two thousand seventeen in Washington, D.C., on the cash position of the government of Guam. When our administrator of the courts was given the BBMR circular back in January, he and our management team have since continued to further analyze other cost-cutting measures to reduce the impacts to our branch operations for the balance of this fiscal year and beyond. Any changes to FY two thousand eighteen will be far-reaching to include the judiciary's support of many law enforcement and criminal justice initiatives in the executive branch. These reductions are already impacting our court services to the public. As a result of personnel shortages, we plan to reduce the hours the courts and ministerial and probation divisions are open to the general public. Additionally, the judiciary will no longer be able to provide some court-ordered counseling services in our specialty courts. Upon our review of the legislature, legislation, I'm sorry, the judiciary maintains no position on the provisions of Bill Two Forty-four Thirty-four relative to referendums or other means of increasing taxes. We recognize that in difficult times, we all share in the responsibility to curtail government operations. Our co-equal branch represents just five percent of the total government budget and historically has lived within its means. We should not be subject to greater interference or intrusion into our operations by the executive branch's reductions beyond five percent of revenue shortfalls for this fiscal year. Specifically with respect to the measure in regard to Section Four, we understand it is a prospective freeze on government salaries for one fiscal year. If that is not what is intended, we humbly request clarification. And as a simple administrative matter, the judiciary asks that the freeze end on the last day of a pay period, March second, two thousand nineteen. Also, the judiciary asks that the judicial council be added with the Civil Service Commission on who determines reclassifications and above-step recruitments. The judiciary of Guam is in the midst of completing a long overdue reclassification study. Just to be clear, we understand without funding, the reclassifications cannot proceed, and we've said that at every judicial council meeting where they've been discussed. However, since we are so close to the end of the study, we plan to complete it, but again, I assure you that it will not be implemented during fiscal year two thousand eighteen. The judiciary requests that Section Six of the proposal exempts the courts. At times, our personnel are called to active military duty in deployments with the United States Armed Forces, and as permitted by law, these positions are temporarily filled by limited-term appointments. Also, we have a number of positions that are paid for by federal funds. Since these are not permanent positions, they may end when federal funds expire at the end of the fiscal year. We wish to avoid any difficulties in using this limited pool of federal funds. The judiciary of Guam remains committed to administering justice by interpreting and upholding the laws, resolving disputes in a timely manner, and providing effective court services to our people. Our branch is full of professional and dedicated employees who recognize the importance of its mission. All of us have and will continue to achieve and succeed in our efforts to fulfill our mandate despite a lack of funding. However, the ramifications of a lack of funding with each passing month requires that we take any and all action possible to ensure that we are provided with the funds mandated by law in order to ensure our operations can continue. And if I may, Mr. Lozama also has a brief testimony.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker and members of the Thirty-Fourth Guam Legislature. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Two Four Five dash thirty-four, uh, submitted to the legislature at the request of the governor of Guam. The judiciary of Guam remains committed to administering justice by interpreting and upholding the laws, resolving dispute, disputes in a timely manner, and providing effective court services to our people. The judiciary maintains no position on the provisions of Bill Two Forty-five dash thirty-four. We ask that the use of any additional general fund revenues generated through new or modified tax policies should first be used to pay appropriations in the General Fund Appropriations Act of two thousand eighteen. Any additional revenues generated must be equitably distributed to each branch of government based on the prorata formula. As we roll through the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, our casework continues to grow in our trial and appellate courts. Each judicial officer and my administrative team has been diligent to move disputes through the court system and prioritize the needs of our court patrons to protect their due process rights afforded them through the United States Constitution and the Organic Act of Guam. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Lozama. Did you wish to provide any testimony? Um, does anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Chief Justice, thank you so much for taking the time to come down here today. Your presence here today is as significant as if Imaga La Hingua was present, being a co-equal branch. So thank you very much for taking the time from your leadership position to be present and to provide us with your insight. I just had one very brief question. Um, a few terms ago, I introduced legislation to try and establish a bail bonds program here on the island, and, um, at the request of your predecessor, we put that aside because they wanted to pursue in the courts, a, um, the electronic monitoring as a means to reduce the detainee population. And so I wanted to ask if the, if the courts would have any objection to me perhaps exploring a reintroduction of that bill, given the fact that the electronic monitoring is now no longer going to be moving forward? Uh, because it was my understanding that with the electronic monitoring, um, the, um, participation of the courts was going to, um, provide a significant savings to the, to the prison in their cost of operations. And so absent an electronic monitoring program, would we be, uh, able to reintroduce a bail bonds, um, idea, uh, in order to perhaps reduce the detainee population at the prison and still be able to realize those savings? Would the courts have any objection to a reintroduction of the bill?
Uh, I, I couldn't comment on the specifics because I don't believe I read that legislation. But there has been, in recent years, a nationwide, um, program to address pre-trial detention, and any measure that could be considered that would reduce pre-trial detention would be welcome, uh, as part of that nationwide effort that Guam has played a part in and is cer, certainly supporting. I would mention that in the past few years, uh, we have seen a decrease in the pre-trial detention, but I know many argue that it should be reduced further. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chief Justice. I'll be forwarding the, um, the bill prior to introduction for the courts to review. It's yours, Massey.
Any other questions?
Chief Justice, the, um, in your letter, you point out that you had in, uh, implemented several, um, cost cut, cutting, um, measures because of the, you weren't getting the allotments released from the, the Department of Administration, and, and that you will now have to implement more if there's this five percent. This five percent is on top of that? So that those, and they're not all specified here, um, except for the reduction of hours, um, for the minister and probation divisions? Is that correct, that they're not all specified here, what those would be, the impacts?
Um, actually, when, if we're required to make deeper, we were saying that we should only have a five percent total cutback.
Okay.
Because that's the, and that would be, uh, a little less than the money that's already been withheld from us this fiscal year. Uh, but if we're, we have some things that we, uh, will result in minor savings, but if you accumulate them, that it comes up. But if we're required to cut deeper, then we're looking at payroll, and either thirty-six hour week, a thirty-two hour week, uh, or a percentage across-the-board reduction. So if we're required to go beyond what we've done already, we're looking at cutting payroll.
Could you just explain, um, the, uh, reduction in court-appointed attorney's fees and alternate public defender contracts? How that impacts the, the indigent defense, I guess? What is, yeah, so if you...
With respect to the alternative public defender, they had requested to hire another attorney, and at this point, we've told them we can't fund that. Um, if things change and we have the money, then we would, we've also told them we, we reconsider that decision. So that's where the alternative public defender budget was...
Okay. So they've got their, like, status, they have status quo?
As far as I...
They're just not able to expand? Okay.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
And then I'll let Mr. Bedasi explain the other cuts.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. So with respect to the alternative public defender, um, they're considered a vendor to the judiciary, so we, we did go back and speak with them, and, and there were some additional, um, things they were adding to their budget that weren't with them the previous year. And so we negotiated a reduction to the contract amount. So that, that's that reduction there. And then, uh, the other reductions that we've looked at are, you know, reducing travel. Um, we have a, we spent a significant amount of money on drug testing kits, so we're, we're looking at operations to see if we can maybe cut back a little bit on, in that area and reduce costs there. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, reducing, reducing purchase of ammunition and supplies, um, regular supplies, any equipment, uh, throughout the court, um, computers, law enforcement equipment, anything that we can forego for the rest of this fiscal year.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the judiciary? If not, Madam Chief Justice, thank you very much, and as Senator Nicholas said, you honor us with your presence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, if any further questions arise, we stand ready to respond. Thank you.
Hmm. Patria? Hera? Suzanne Kenshiro? Linda Denorcy? Leo Casil? John Camacho Jr.? RC? RC? Jeanette Tovis? Sal Rapades? Mike Siniklis? Mike Siniklis? Suzanne Kenchiro. Linda Denorcy. John Camacho Jr. Jeanette Tovis. Max Manzo Manzano. Darlene Tydinko. Peter Ada. Why don't we just start from this and then just go down, okay?
If I may, I'll be first. She doesn't want to be first.
Okay, introduce yourself and --
Okay. This is -- good afternoon. My name is Dr. Suzanne Kenchiro, and I'm the Chief Public Health Officer at the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I am testifying in support of Bill 245-34. Current salaries of physicians, dentists, pharmacists, nurses, and other health professionals at public health are well below the national average compared to the U.S. We already have a difficult time recruiting and retaining health professionals in the department. If salaries are rolled back to 2014 wages, we will lose the health professionals we have in the department, either to resignations or retirement. We already have three registered nurses at Central Public Health retiring this year. This will leave us with two remaining registered nurses. Due to the shortage of staff, many clinical services are being reduced or eliminated. It is difficult to attract new nurses to work at the department because of the low salaries. Most nurses will opt to work in the private sector, GMH, or go off-island to work. This is a critical time for the department. The number of individuals testing positive for TB continues to increase, placing a burden for the department to treat them. All TB patients must be seen at public health. There is only one physician currently seeing them and managing their disease. She is tired and overworked. When she is on leave, patient appointments have to be pushed back until she return. It is very difficult to get coverage for her because TB is very difficult to manage. Our immunization clinic hours continue to decrease due to the shortage of nurses. In the past, immunizations were offered three times a week, 50 patients a day. Now it is down to twice a week, 16 patients a day. Immunizations are one of the most effective ways to prevent childhood diseases like chickenpox, mumps, and measles. There is currently a measles outbreak in the Philippines, mumps outbreaks in Hawaii, and a deadly influenza epidemic in the U.S. We need to prevent an outbreak here on Guam. It is more cost-effective to prevent diseases compared to treating them. If more money was invested in public health programs, less people would need to go to GMH or G R M C for medical care. So thank you for your attention and giving this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Ma'am.
Hafaday, and good afternoon, Senators, Speaker. I am here today to express my grave concern on a small section we're talking about in Bill Number 244 and 34. As a management analyst too for a line agency whose sole purpose is to ensure the health, safety, welfare, and overall well-being of our people, the people you serve, where I sit as a classified employee, I must say I feel I came a bit unprepared today. As I only received word on the two bills in question at this hearing that were issued from the Office of B.J. Cruz to for Bill 244-34 and the Office of Governor for Bill Number 245-34. My role as an analyst would speak volumes when it comes to preparations of data, analytics, research, proper planning, and fiscal know-how, but it doesn't take much to see that the short paragraph I had access to read in Bill 244-34 just the other day, Section 4 entitled Competitive Wage Act of 2014 frozen, unfortunately doesn't make much sense. Lawmakers, bill writers, I ask you, what does that even mean? Competitive Wage Act of 2014 frozen? When you take a photo or a picture from your camera, you in turn take a freeze frame of what's there, right? What's in existence? Nothing changes, it's the status quo. But I asked our lawmakers and our bill writers today, there is a lot of rhetoric being tossed around, making this small section unclear and frighteningly false in its verbiage. A press release that was also being circulated by the bill's authors stated that in addition to the initial round of cost reductions at each agency level totaling $17 million, Cruz's proposal would save an approximate $10 million for the government of Guam through rollbacks. This was not implied as a freeze, but rollbacks in fiscal year 2018. Now for the execution of this bill, this would cut back salary increases resulting from the Competitive Wage Act of 2014 until March 1, 2019, for all positions within every branch of government, including all government of Guam, departments, bureaus, agencies, subentities, public corporations, and mayoral offices. I would like to take this opportunity that again I'm thankful for to ask you, bill writers and leaders today, let's cut through all the rhetoric, facts, and figures, and be clear with what you are intending to do. Do you intend on possibly rescinding, temporarily repealing, reducing, or rolling back on this competitive wage law of 2014 that was designed for many individuals like me who found full meaning and purpose in making a tough career decision to serve our people with not only integrity and dignity in what we do, but simply what we earned? What I and many of my colleagues openly competed for and were selected into our titles because of the Competitive Wage Act of 2014 passed? Finally, making government of Guam work more appealing, more marketable to those educated and skilled in the local job market, as it finally provided an increase, not so much a complete match to what national levels are, but at least this Competitive Wage Act brought the antiqued, outdated, and substandard Gov-Guam wages closer to national average. Levels of wages compared to the appropriate labor markets, and account taken of relevant economic factors plaguing our U.S. economy and in turn our local economy today here on Guam. These are times when specialized, well-qualified, and skilled workers who are eager, passionate, and more so needed to operate and run the front lines and backbones of this government to reduce inefficiencies, streamline processes and procedures so that we can get the results we workers signed up for and strive to do every day when we sit in the departments, struggling to comply with both federal and local grants and mandates. I'm not here to talk a success story about myself, but I want to simply use the term "freeze frame." I'm going to freeze frame a short story of who I am and who a lot of the people who I interact with in this field of government are. My name is Patrice Hara. I was home-bred, born and raised on this beautiful island, attending public school my elementary years and onwards to private schools for middle and high school. I worked hard as a young teen, stayed focused and disciplined, studied so I can make the grades to successfully compete and apply to an accredited college in the mainland. I did just that, and I was accepted to the University of San Francisco. I continued to work hard, study, write, read, get on work-study programs that were afforded to me, and was dependent on student loans and federal grants, and ensured that I could keep those grades so that again I can openly compete at my university again to graduate and receive my bachelor's degree with cum laude honors at the University of San Francisco's Business School of Marketing and Communications. I came home and openly competed for jobs and held executive and management positions in media, sales, and marketing management in a highly competitive automotive industry because the skills, education, and knowledge I worked hard for and competed openly to qualify for. In the back of my head, serving my community was something I always wanted to do, but it had to take a wait and had to come later, because, well, government leaders, senators, the jobs just didn't pay enough. Looking into Gov-Guam positions were always so disheartening for me because the pay at the time in 2013 just wasn't enough to make ends meet with student debt, the everyday increasing cost of utilities and bills that it takes that many of my colleagues, friends, family, peers need to live to survive on this island. Because this seems -- because this bill for 244-34 seems to be a bit of a shot in blindness, where all jobs, even those whether 100% federally funded or those funded with federal jobs with match opportunities, seem to be a shot in the dark, this bill is so vague, it's just startling that this one short paragraph is all you have to say about taking away wages that were earned and hard and worked for. Let's just put it into simple words, your most vital and steady local consumers, lawmakers, your very people who keep you and your vital -- and your departments afloat, the frontline workers, whether in administration, the social workers, the analysts, the coordinators, those professionals in healthcare, environmental, and mental health who have gained their worth and value through the skills and experience they bring and add into their jobs every day, those hard-working individuals who earn this whether through time or education or vested their careers in integrity to the jobs they do to keep these vital agencies afloat, to serve the everyday average citizen, and in turn keep this island afloat with our income and purchasing power, have you thought about the implications of what this bill means? Again, I brought no solutions today, but I would really like to ask our leaders if we can not take the easy road, but work together with all the different people out there who know a lot about their jobs and know how to streamline and make government work more efficiently. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Casil.
Mr. Speaker, honorable senators, my name is Leo Casil, Acting Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Thank you for allowing me to testify on Bills 244 and 245 this afternoon. And as you probably heard from the beginning, there's a redundancy on all the bills, and it'll be repetitive, but please bear, because I have made a brief summary analysis of all the bills, but just comparing the provisions of both bills. And some of the highlights that I thought would be important to see are as follows. For Bill 244, it will freeze salary increases and increments. It proposes to increase the business privilege tax by 1% or from 4% to 5%, and it would maintain stability for the government. It, however, does not provide a dedicated funding source for GMH and DOE. And the salary deduction will end on March 5, 2019, and the business privilege tax on January of 2020. In contrast, Bill 245 does not impact salaries and increments. However, it increases the business privilege tax by 2%, of which 25% will be for DOE, 75% will be for GMH, and of course, 1% for the stability of the general fund. With the above simple comparison analysis, I will say at this point that Bill 245 would provide the most benefits as a result of the changes in the federal tax code. Not included in the bill and will help sustain the financial health and stability of the general fund is the execution of Governor's Executive Order 20-1201, which orders agencies' general cost containment measures to all object categories in their budget. The Department of Public Health and Social Services has submitted a total of about $5.4 million in cuts to its current budget for fiscal year 2018 as a result of the order. I would also like to add that I am in support in maintaining salaries and increments for the hard-working employees of my department of Public Health and Social Services and all impacted government Guam employees. I support the increase of the 2% for the BPT from 4% to 6%, since it is going to provide funding sources to GMH and also DOE, and as well as to provide stability to the general fund. I also like to add in this point, just from observation on these tax increases, I think eventually we will all get together and come up with some, as I say, viable recommendations for all this. But I foresee within the agencies, there will perhaps be a rash of fees that, you know, depending on the outcome of the tax thing. I know, in fact, in my department, we were able to -- they were able to increase fees, that they're authorized to go out there without the adjudication act. So if that will be a last instrument, then perhaps we'll do that. So, you know, I eventually see a lot of this to be happening throughout government courts. You know, they have their own fee structures, they can raise funds, police, and so on. But with that, I'm sure we can all get together and after this, and like a politician, we can put our heads together and, yes, let's come up with a solution. In conclusion, I'm in support of Bill 244 and highly recommend the support in passage of Bill 245. Thank you, and Sidious Massey.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, senators. My name is Linda Ompingo-Denorcy, the Camille Center Chief Executive Officer. I have been employed with the Department of Public Health and Social Services for 27 years. I am the seventh of eight children of Juan Infidello Ompingo, and my parents had no education and they struggled so hard to raise their children. Thus, living in poverty, my parents told all of their children to go to college in order to get out of poverty. Living in poverty, the government of Guam provided me the financial assistance through the Professional Technical Award to be educated in the United States and to return to the island of Guam upon the completion of my master's degree in public health. As a change agent, I, along with the hard-working Department of Public Health and Social Services staff, worked tirelessly to make transformational changes, such as expanding the Northern and Southern Region Camille Health Centers and bringing the quality of healthcare to the national standards. The Northern Region Camille Center recently was distinguished in February 2018 as a Patient-Centered Medical Home Recognized Practice at Level III, the highest level by the National Committee for Quality Assurance, or NCQA. NCQA is a private, nonprofit organization dedicated to improving healthcare by evaluating and reporting on quality of healthcare throughout the United States. The NCQA seal is a widely recognized symbol of quality, signifying that an organization is well-managed and delivers high-quality care and service. The Northern Region Camille Center is the only Camille Center throughout the Pacific Island achieving this high recognition, and many health centers in the United States have not achieved Level III quality of healthcare standards. I come before you to testify in favor of Bill 245-34, which proposes an increase of the BPT from 4% to 6%, 1% of the increase to maintain government stability, and funding from the BBT dedicated to GMH and Department of Education. I also fully support Bill 245-34, which does not freeze the increment or touch the salaries of the Department of Public Health and Social Services employees. The Department of Public Health and Social Services employees have not had any salary adjustments in decades until the Competitive Wage Act of 2014. In fact, the Competitive Wage Act of 2014 is still not up to par with the national rate. Many employees, including myself, have grassroots in Guam, as this is our home, and for this reason, many of us have chosen to live in Guam and work for the government of Guam. However, freezing the increment of employees of the Department of Public Health and Social Services may have adverse effects. For instance, it may entice government workers who have enough years to retire to make the decision to leave Guam and leave the whole department, and these seasoned workers already have their three highest annual salaries. And so remaining employed during a salary freeze would be enticing, and it will not be enticing and certainly not beneficial for them in terms of increasing their annuity. Thus, they may opt to retire. Additionally, any freeze in salary increments will force many employees, such as physicians, mid-level providers, nurses, licensed practical nurses, nurse aides, information technology, laboratory physicians, pharmacy technicians, pharmacists, et cetera, to seek employment in the private sector because their salaries are much more lucrative than the government. Currently, many of the Camille Center staff have approached me, all shaken up, about Bill 244-34, particularly the freezing of the salary increment. The Department of Public Health and Social Services employees are dedicated and hardworking -- The Department of Public Health and Social Services employees are dedicated and hardworking employees, and they work tirelessly for the people of Guam. The DPHS employees are also taxpayers. I certainly always pay high taxes, since I have no children and I have no deductions, and reducing any workforce pay would certainly adversely impact the local economy, as more workers will spend less money to purchase goods. Additionally, with the rising cost of food, gasoline, and utilities, many families are already on a tight budget. Some of them live payday to payday or having outside employment other than the Department of Public Health and Social Services in order to make ends meet. Furthermore, freezing the salary increment may result in high turnover, resignations, terminations, and vacancies, and it certainly would be impossible to recruit health and allied health professionals. When the new hospital, Guam Regional Medical City, opened, many skilled health professionals resigned from Guam Memorial Hospital and the Camille Centers to work at Guam Regional Medical City. The Camille Centers continue to struggle to recruit and retain health professionals and allied health professionals, information technology staff, claim specialists, administrative personnel, et cetera, and to freeze their salary increment. At this time, with the rising costs of utilities, gas, and food, it will place a financial strain on them, and for some, it may entice them to seek employment elsewhere. Without health, allied health professionals, and skilled workers, the Camille Centers certainly cannot continue to operate. Moreover, the Camille Centers work in partnership with GMH by providing primary preventive and outpatient care services and referring patients in need of inpatient care services and specialty care services to GMH. GMH and the Camille Center are the safety net providers, accepting the indigent, the uninsured, the underserved populations who are most in need of healthcare and least able to find care. GMH needs financial support, since by law, they have to provide services to patients regardless of their ability to pay. Similarly, the Camille Centers, being federally qualified health centers, must also provide patients services regardless of their ability to pay. And the Camille Centers certainly helps to prevent unnecessary emergency room visits. We all have to work in harmony as a community to support the healthcare system and exemplify high-quality standards of care. We are also taxpayers, and as taxpayers, we need to increase the BBT from 4% to 6% in order to support health and social service programs and empower our youth and adolescents to have a good education. Education is the key to coming out of poverty and becoming self-sustaining. In view of the above, I fully support Bill 245-34, and I humbly ask you, senators, to vote in favor of Bill 245-34. And in doing so, together as taxpayers, we can make transformational changes to sustain a comprehensive, well-coordinated healthcare system with high-quality standards of care and give children the resources to acquire a good education so that they can get out of poverty and become self-sustaining citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, senators. Thank you for affording me the opportunity to come before your committee to testify on two proposed legislative bills, 244 and 245. Most of this morning and this afternoon, you have heard testimonies from so many specialty departments and agencies who were speaking on behalf of their employees. Mr. Speaker, I am sure you've heard enough, and you're going to get even more tonight when the others come in for the six o'clock session, when the crowd would even be much bigger. Mr. Speaker, one coworker at DYA this morning said to me, and I want to bring this down here today, anytime any someone hits my wallet and I am unable to meet my family's livelihood, my mortgage payment is an agreement between me and the bank. Don't anyone ever take that hard-earned money that I worked for. And in fact, I have to many times bring my own tools to work to do my job because the department or the agency did not have the tools for me to do my job. Another individual who worked for the government of Guam said, because of the Competitive Wage Act implementation, they were able to make ends meet a little, but there was another added responsibility, which they had to take care of their ailing mother for her care. They were able, because of that little increase since 2014, they were able to give their mother a caregiver to provide them while the two of them go find, go get a job and continue their work. An employee said to me yesterday that she was seriously considered, she is going to be retiring on September 30, but if this proposal does occur with her, for her salary drawback, or rollback, or freeze, or whatever, she may have to either do two things, either quit immediately, or may have to go and extend her work time with the government because she would not be able to make ends meet. I have, excuse me. I have received official word that two of our law enforcement officers may be deployed for a year, thus requiring a buffer in their absence. We may have to reduce the resource center hours, which we have proven and seen in recent months, the great impact it has done on kids having to use the services of the resource center. One thing I really don't want to do, and it will be my last resort, and I'll fight it to the bitter end, is having to stop the nursing services at DYA. I need those nurses because of the needs of the clients over there. Senators, other agencies may be able to tell their customers, we'll take care of you tomorrow, not DYA. We must immediately respond to the referrals of the judicial system, no ifs or buts. Mr. Speaker, we only have one hospital, public hospital. The story we've been hearing on both printed and electronic media is unbelievable. Some of those problems at the hospital, yes, could have been avoided, but to hear that they could not even get a life support, a life-saving equipment, is inexcusable. This is not only an executive branch responsibility, but the legislature and the people of Guam are all equally responsible. Let us please quit pointing fingers. The hospital is currently on life support. This afternoon, Mr. Speaker, you've heard the Superintendent of Education explain how it would impact DOE. Let me add another dimension. This body gives DOE a lump sum budget, and then from that lump sum budget, DOE, go figure out what your needs are and get it from there. Let me remind this legislature that it was this legislature, not 34, but others previously, was the one who gave us, who required the 14 points with no funding. Senators, even before we received word about cutting, doing some cut, cutting, did I say cutting? Cut-cutting measures, we immediately were able to cut off or not fill vacant positions. We even cut off hot water. If you're not, it's not in use, turn it off. Turn it on two hours before they go to school, and when they come back, turn it on again and turn it right back on. All of the windows at DYA are turned, are open, two hours in the morning to save a little. We've done everything we can. I think I've said enough, senators, so that I can allow others to talk and share with your, with the proposal that would do, that would be impacting the people of Guam. Thank you so much.
I am a private person and here to testify on two, my name is Virginia Nguyen. I'm here to testify on Bill 244 and 245. Yes, I agree on the efficiency of a government. In the beginning of this session, just before we were being told to come up here and testify, there were pointers that I heard from Mr. Estevas saying what the island is ailing. The island is, according to his speech this morning, was an island of resource sanctuary. The second that I've heard from him is that we are focused on federal cuts. Third, we are current emergency claim. Fifth, we are under a Band-Aid fix. So, Governor, I mean, a member of this body, I know that everybody, every department have put in cuts. They're even thinking of reducing supplies for their employees, but I do not concur with that, that they're going to do that. I actually think that this body, the judiciary, the gubernatorial, and the, what is the third one? And the lawmaking body should actually come together on an island-wide feasibility study so that we don't have a Band-Aid fix. We are actually spearheading an independence for this, for this island that has been protested over there at the governor's in Adal. And with this budget cut with the federal government, that's nothing compared to where we're, we want to head for. We're looking at independence. And if we're looking for independence, this Band-Aid fix of cutting costs or cutting salaries will not, will not fix the problem. What this body should do is look into ways of reducing the power increase of this island. Second, we need to do a feasibility study of every problem that we may incur in the future, whether it may be education, health, and welfare. This body needs to do that. A feasibility study of the island problem. And I thank you for giving me this, this time to testify. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming down, ma'am. Anybody have any questions to this panel? If not, I thank all of you, and thank you very much, ma'am, for coming down today. Thank you, miss. Oh, can I ask everybody to leave their written testimony so that we have copies of it? All right. John, John Peck. Ed Ordonez. Elizabeth Barameses from DPW. John Camacho Jr. R.C. Fonten. R.C. David Lefison. Carl Dominguez. Kurt Rosario. Matt. Char Golev. Somebody from GSA Ratten. Someone from GSA W. Robaton. Lobatan, oh, okay. Lobatan. Rhonda Kahoe. Jeanette Tovis. Jenny Arceo. John Pangolinan. Benny Servino. Tammy Amnan. Tammy? Okay. Why don't we just start? Mr. Dominguez, you were, yeah. All right, Ms. Lemerina, why don't you come join them? You were in the morning list and I, but, okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, senators. My name is Carl Dominguez. I became the Director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans last July, and, you know, we're a small organization. When I, when I joined last July, we had 35 employees, and this afternoon, we're down to 33. We lost a couple. Let me just say, I feel for you. This is a, this is a marathon day, but understandable because we have a situation that is probably the most critical in many years here in Guam. And I know that there's two bills on the floor, and I'm here because I love my staff. They're, they're really great. They're, they're hardworking, talented, and dedicated. We're not a glamorous organization, but we really, we do very important work. Senators Morrison and Castro were former directors. Last year, we gave a presentation to you, Senator Lee, and to you, Vice Speaker Terahy. And so, I'm here today because I want to speak on behalf of the staff. And I did submit written testimony, and in it, some of you may not know all the things that we do at the Bureau, but we really do a lot. And so, here's a list of some of the things that are really important. Just a couple of things. This year, for example, we're the lead agency on the FAS enumeration, which will be done by the Census Bureau, who's been tasked by the Department of Interior to do this. It has to be done- It has to be done every five years. And basically, we're gonna, we're gonna count the number of FAS citizens on Guam because the, the amount of the thirty million dollars that is available for the, for the FAS citizens depends on the number, on the count. So we compete for those dollars with Hawaii, American Samoa, and the CNMI. So, so that figure is very important. So we're gonna do that this year. Also this year, we're going to, to do what's called a household income and expenditure survey, which hasn't been done in Guam for twelve years. This is a very important kind of survey. It will, we will use it to update the Consumer Price Index. The Department of Labor will be using the statistics to do, to do its work. A couple of years off is the, the very important twenty-twenty census and we're actively working on it now. I've, I've been on a couple of long-distance phone calls with the Census Bureau representatives in Washington, DC. We're actively, actively planning for it. So anyway, I, I won't make this a very long speech. I, I did present the two bills to my staff, just, just to educate them if they're not aware of it, because it's very important, it's gonna affect them. And, and I did present both bills, the, the highlights of both bills, the, the one, in the case of Bill two forty-four, the one percent increase in the GRT and the freezing of the Competitive Wage Act. And then on two forty-five, the, the two percent increase in the GRT, no, no freezing of it, the, the point seven-five percent going to the hospital and then the point-two-five percent going to the Department of Education. And so I, I did a informal survey of our staff. A couple of our staff are off-island at a conference in Washington, DC. And four of our staff are neutral on it. They, they didn't decide whether to support two forty-four, two forty-five. But of the rest of them, no one supported two forty-four. They're, they're supporting two forty-five. So I'm just conveying to you this afternoon the sentiments of my staff and I, I would say, on their behalf, at least for the majority of them, that we are in support of Bill two forty-five. And, and in a nutshell, that is my testimony this afternoon.
Thank you very much and we appreciate your written testimony, Ms. Lamarena. You signed up this morning, so I recognize you now.
I apologize, I had to leave to take care of some work and I came back. My name is Tony Lamarena. Good afternoon, senators. Before I do my testimony, you know, I've read both bills, two forty-four and two forty-five, and I'm a little bit confused with some of the language. And I don't know if I'm the only one, but is it a rollback or is it a freeze? Anyone up there can answer the question?
Give your testimony and we'll deal with it.
The, and the reason I ask that is because it, it makes a lot of difference. You know, many of, I've served with Senator Ada and Senator Algun and I think that's about it. But, and, and, but the reality is, is we've gone through this in past legislatures, as far as thirty-two-hour work weeks, freezes, with various, with various administrations. But one thing we've always realized is the inequity as a result of these freezes and thirty-two-hour work weeks. We've always thrown that burden, that burden was always borne by the line agencies. We had no authority of the autonomous agencies. We had no authority over the judiciary. So a lot of the burden, if you looked into the past, every time there was a freeze or a thirty-two-hour work week, it bore, that burden was borne by the three to four thousand line department agencies. People from the Department of Tomorrow Affairs, people from DISIT, from DPW, from REVEN Tax, Department Administration, Department of Labor, BSP, BBMR. These are the employees, four thousand employees, because no one could touch the employees of the autonomous agencies. Of course, no one, you know, public safety is another issue, no one wanted to touch that. No one wanted to touch health. And likewise, no one wanted to touch education. So every single time, that inequity, that burden was borne by these three to four thousand employees. Out of the eleven thousand employees now, when I was in the legislature, we were up to sixteen thousand employees. This can't continue. I mean, you know, everyone says, well, if you raise the gross receipts tax by two percent, prices will go up. Well, prices went up anyway. Every time I go to the grocery store, the prices are changing, regardless if they raise the gross receipts tax or not. Fuel costs have gone up. By the way, Tepes Fuel went down. Have I seen the prices go down at the, the gas stations? I remember under Governor Camacho, we raised gross receipts tax by two percent. It had a sunset provision. Sunset provision ended. Did I see prices go down by two percent at the stores? Or did they take the windfall? The reality is, is, and this is why I'm here, I'm not here, I've got seventeen, seventeen civilian staff of the Department of Corrections and I feel for them. Because really, my officers, my officers are not gonna bear this burden. My two hundred officers are not gonna bear the burden. It's gonna be my seventeen civilian staff. The reality is, I prefer that the employees, that people, be given the opportunity to decide how they want to spend their money. If you raise the GRT by two percent, let the people, let the employees decide, do they want to eat at Tony Roma's or they're gonna eat at GPO? But give them that decision. Don't, don't take money from their pockets through a rollback. Make them make that decision. And let's make it equitable. Whatever you do, let's make it equitable. Let's not throw it in the backs of those three to four thousand line employees from some of the agencies. There's a lot more, people in the other line agencies don't get mad because I didn't mention your agency, but, you know, I'm here on their behalf because I've seen it. I've seen it on numerous occasions where we've thrown it on their backs. Thank you, senators.
Thank you. Tammy, why don't I hear from you because I'd like for you to take the little girl home? You, you can go next so that you have a chance to run home with her.
Good afternoon, senators. Before I begin, I'd like to table my concern of the Speaker's bill and the ambiguous phrasing and that even some members of this legislative body are not clear on Bill number two forty-four dash thirty-four's objectives. And that this bill would be, in fact, not just a salary rollback, but a freeze at that salary rollback for two years. And this is my testimony to the legislature against Senator Benjamin J. Cruz's bill, number two forty-four dash thirty-four. Thank you. My name is Tammy Amwan. I'll be forty-four years old this year. I'm born and raised on Guam and I did, for a time, reside off-island for a period of four years. When I returned, I was not planning on staying, but life happens and plans change. And at thirty years old, I found myself a divorced, single mother. With the help of my family, I was able to go back into the workforce and support my little girl. I couldn't give her everything, but I gave her everything I had. Now, I never intended on staying on Guam even after my divorce. The trauma of my divorce made me want to work off-island since my ex-husband resides here. But my mom convinced me that I could make a good life here for myself and my daughter, even though I argued that there were way more opportunities I could avail from in the States, both for work and higher education. But I chose to stick it out and try to make a life for us on Guam. So I entered back into local government service in two thousand and four as an entry-level clerk typist one and worked my way up. I struggled and sacrificed and finally received my undergrad degree in two thousand and nine and then through my agency, BBMR, which I endearingly refer to as the Navy SEALs of Gov Guam, because as everyone knows, we get the job done. Matriculated into our university's graduate studies program through the Doc Sanchez Scholarship, where I was blessed to be a part of the creation of Project Foresight, which received recognition from this body in the form of the Legislative Resolution Number three seventy-six dash thirty-three. With support like this, I continue to climb the rungs of self-improvement, thereby enriching my contributions as a government of Guam public servant. Fast forward to present day, the Competitive Wage Act of two thousand and fourteen, or the CWA, allowed me a tangible opportunity to entertain living my life out on Guam. With the establishment of a living wage, my husband and I were able to purchase our very first home in two thousand and fourteen. This dream could have never been possible at my age before the CWA. I could not and cannot sustain my mortgage had it not been for the closing of that disparate wage gap in my salary by the establishment of the CWA. I'm sure the rest of my brothers and sisters in government service will agree and we commend this administration for pushing the CWA for us. But I digress. I didn't come here today to ground stand or try to play strategic games of innuendo or placation. I'm just here to tell my story so that you'll know a little of my life and the struggles I face day to day, living on Guam as a God-fearing mother, wife, friend, constituent, tax contributor, consumer, and most importantly, as a local stakeholder in our island's future. I may be old-school, forty-three years old, and try to continue to stick it out here and even sell my belongings at the flea market just to stay afloat and try to continue to stick it out here. And hang on for the best. And some people keep referring to this just a short two-years' time if this bill, number two forty-four dash thirty-four passes. But what this body fails to recognize is the prospective massive loss of the innovative, creative, intelligent, younger generations that you are relying on to carry the torch when you're gone. You see, what you all don't understand is that millennials are the untapped resource that may potentially propel Guam out of the, out of the colonialism and sub-citizenry status that we've raged against for so long. You will be effectively driving off this valuable resource that you are thrusting farther and farther away from Mother Guahan. You've seen it with your own eyes. You have family members that have relocated, searching for a better quality of life, whether younger Guamanians fresh out of university or retirees spending their pensions off-island because they're getting more bang for their buck elsewhere. Most of us here know that the health of our community is driven by more than just cost-cutting. What will happen to local revenues if you take the ability away from people like myself to buy anything? Toilet tissue, dish soap? I know of people buying toilet tissue off of Walmart online. I've heard talk that, oh, well, there's always someone willing to do the job if they won't. But do you really want to bank Guam's future on an employee that has no other investment in this island other than the almighty dollar? Senators, there's been a mass exodus out of Guam that continues to happen and it may go on until you have no more constituents to depress. I often wonder if this body is already testing that theory here by threatening to relegate hard-working individuals back to an antiquated pay scale. Wasn't the whole premise of entertaining the HAYES study to attract a younger qualitative workforce that would not only sustain Gov Guam, but build it up into the system we all dream it could be? So which is it then? Are we gonna go back and bank on some half-baked concept that it's better to be thankful for any job, for any amount of pay, than fight for the rightful value of your job's compensation that you knowingly deserve? This is not just the story of public servants like me, but every Guamanian that has felt the oppression of a higher authority bearing down on them and telling us that we're not worth exploring other solutions for the benefit of the masses and not just for the few. There will be several analogies made here today, but I just want you to remember that I know my worth. And it confounds me that any member of this body would degrade the integrity of what I do in any capacity as a budget analyst, but mostly as a Gov Guam employee, because I work hard and I know for a fact that I'm deserving of where I'm at. I'm not from the upper echelon of our society. I don't have a last name associated with any affluent family ties. I'm not rich or well-connected. I don't have friends in high places. I just continue to hope and pray and educate myself in various ways and fight for the niche I've carved out for myself here on my island home. And I stay to try and better our island as a whole. For me, the choice to leave island or stay was a balance between a higher salary and better standard and cost of living and being home, close to my family, to show my daughters how the simple island life is the best life and how to show respect and pay homage to our Sina and enrich this community with my knowledge, skills, talents, and abilities. I'm sure it's obvious by now what I chose and I invested in and continue to invest so much too. So why is this body trying to make it harder for any of us to stay? Why do you continue to try and edge us all out as if there really was any delineation between essential and non-essential employees when one doesn't work without, without the other? Why are some handpicked to be subjugated and some not? Do we all need to eat, pay our mortgages, put gas in our cars to take our kids to school? I like to share that my father was a dedicated Gov Guam employee bus mechanic at DPW for thirty-five years. And he always said that the two things you never mess with are a man's money and his time. I deserve my pay. And it's not fair for this body to allow for a HAYES study, sanctify its implementation, then penalize not just government employees, but your loyal constituents that believe in you by essentially rolling them back to lower salaries that no longer match their way of life. One of my colleagues will see an eleven thousand dollar reduction from your proposed bill's pay reduction. I will see a more than nine thousand dollar reduction in mine. I am still reeling and reorganizing my finances around the almost two hundred dollars deducted from my paycheck every payday from the hybrid retirement plan, Mr. Speaker, which was also your brainchild. The difference is, is the revamp of the Gov Guam retirement plan was a necessity. Bill number two forty-four dash thirty-four is not. I'm here to tell this body that none of this is right. And if that's the case and this bill, God forbid, passes, then work with those whom you will oppress with this bill to walk us into our banks for which we have mortgage loans and use your clout to help us obtain waivers for our deferred mortgage payments. Or you better look into building a time machine so we can all go back in time and buy cheaper homes with lower mortgages if you, senators, implement this bill in good faith. And that will be my requirement of you, the people we chose to vote for and the reason why you sit where you are. I'm just scraping by like everyone else. I don't drive a luxury car. If anything, it's the proverbial hooptie. You can check it out in the parking lot. I live in the modest subdivision of Baza Gardens. I live in an extremely humble existence. And if this body forces me to scrape any harder, it may have to be off-island. But just know that I feel I am a valuable resource to this island. I am knowledgeable, shrewd, and determined and I can make it anywhere. But I choose to try and make it here on Guam. If you have people living, leaving island to find better-paying jobs elsewhere, that's not only going to impact the government of Guam, but the economy as a whole. So find another way, senators. The governor's bill makes a lot of sense and at the end of the day, we're all consumers. Business owners are consumers too. A higher tax gets collected and it's remitted to the government from the collective, from all of us. And on a closing note, I would like to thank Senator Siniklis for thinking outside the box and not just content with the fast, quick fix placing financial hardships on the little guys like me. Thank you, sir. Lastly, to reiterate on earlier testimony, placing additional tax via the BPT is a way to generate more revenue for the government. Whether private business owners roll that percent increase back is a totally different story. That's, that's not on the government. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. John, and then Benny.
My name is John Pringleven. I'm here as a private citizen. And I'd like to do my testimony. I'm a concerned Governor of Guam employee of 30 years, and I am a voting citizen of Guam. As a Governor of Guam employee, I've experienced many challenges of a Governor of Guam public servant. Some of these challenges include the whole bag of salary increments and the static compensation since 1995. I endure well, I endure as well as the 10,000 other employees of the Governor of Guam. For most of us, we keep our silence and we endure the challenge of making do with less. We continue to endure. When the Competitive Wage Act became effective, I was elated, and it made, and it made the sacrifice that I endured, as did my colleagues, worthwhile. I'm finally getting the compensation that I sought for in past years. The pay increases occurred four years ago. Now, because of no fault by me, the compensation that I earn is now being proposed to be taken away. The basis for this proposed compensation cut is a result of the potential shortfall of general fund tax revenues due to the U.S. Tax, Cost, and Job Act of 2017. The potential costs range from $47 million to $67 million, which brings Bill 244-34 into play. As I understand it, these numbers have been put forth in their final form to follow the basis for their outcome. The impression I seem to be receiving is that the Guam, the Governor of Guam is in dire state because the island economy is in static condition. However, this is not the case. The island economy has and will continue to experience economic gains in all sectors of the economy, given the visibility of tourism, the viability of tourism, increased military construction, the increased military presence of Navy and Air Force personnel, and now a budding H2 workforce. Were the attributes attaining factors of a good or better-than-good economy factored in all these revenue loss? This contribution, the contribution of a positive island economy has not been factored in all these discussions, from what I've heard. The FY 2018 Appropriation Act identified tax revenues, tax revenues of $630 million, which is a 2% increase from FY 2017. A 2% increase is anomalous growth. It's like a plateau in the economy. Which is a 2% increase from the 27% of the tax revenues of $617 million after deducting for the provisions or tax refund. Applying the $67 million as the basis for the 2018 tax revenue shortfall, the net FY 2018 tax revenue available after the projected shortfall will yield $563 million. These numbers are not mine. They're based on the Appropriation Act of 2018. If we apply an additional 8% increase in tax revenues to this adjusted revenue for a modest growth island economy, the additional growth in tax revenues, I'm talking about tax revenues, not tax rate increase, is $45 million. In addition, there's another $14 million in reserve pursuant to Section 22436 of Article 2, Chapter 26 of the Title II IGCA, the Deficit Reduction Act. By combining the additional new general fund tax revenues of $45 million plus the reserve of $14 million, the available new revenues is $59 million, which would cover 88% of the shortfall predicted, resulting in a net loss of $8.3 million. Now, these numbers are not mine. These are numbers are the numbers of this body. It is in my opinion that the reduced net loss does not warrant the reversions of the Competitive Wage Act. It is in my opinion that this reduced net loss does not warrant, I'll repeat again, the reversions of the Competitive Wage Act. We have to be, we have to do better in our projections, okay? This should show up to be made up by increasing the business privilege tax by only .0015%, which represents $15 million, which is less than 1%. In this analysis, I'm advocating the revision of the 28 tax revenue by increasing all tax categories except, by increasing, except BPP by additional 8% based on the anticipated positive growth of the economy in FY 2018, plus 11% increase for the BPT. Again, this is not a rate increase. It is going back to the revenues, factoring in the economic growth that we see that's going on. All you have to do is go to tourists, look at all the tourists that are coming in, go to the restaurants and look at all the military personnels that are buying foods and services, okay? And the economy is not dead. The economy is modestly growing, and it's probably going to be robust next year. The Governor of Guam is the one that's dead. So my presentation here is that let's work with what we're doing, go back to the drawing boards, look at your economic growth, factoring what's available, look at the 4,000 issues that have been authorized, I'm figuring at least 500 to 1,000 that will come in by mid-year because they will come in if there's a deadline on those projects that the military has. And that's my presentation.
Thank you very much. If you'd leave that, a copy of that for our, Mrs. Servino.
Buenos dias, Speaker Cruz and members of the Committee on Appropriations and Judication. For the record, my name is Ben S. Servino. I'm the Director for the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities. I am submitting this written testimony in opposition of Bill Number 244-34 and in support of Bill Number 24534. Though both bills, which were drafted with the intent of stabilizing the current situation of our government of Guam, I have concerns regarding Bill Number 244-34. DISIT has been doing its very best to identify cost-cutting measures within the department without jeopardizing the quality of services that are provided to our clients with disabilities. Each fiscal year, there has been 15% of our appropriation placed in reserve, of which we have tried to live within our means and avoid requesting for the release of those funds from the reserve. Since my appointment as the Director of DISIT, we have not hired a deputy director to assist me with overseeing the overall operations. In addition, we have not filled the VR Administrator and the DSS Administrator positions, which have been vacant for several years, along with the Word Processing Secretary in the Director's Office. But we had changed that particular position to an entry-level office aide to cut personnel costs and utilize the 2% limited-term appointment program hire. A reduction of approximately $40,000 from the VR local match would reduce the VR federal grant by $144,793 in this fiscal year. If more drastic cuts are enforced, the Division of Voc Rehab may need to invoke an order of selection by priority categories to which eligible individuals are accepted based on their significance or their disability. Also, under an order of selection, individuals with the most significant disabilities are selected first for the provision of vocational rehab services. Other priorities would need to be secondary based on the availability of funds. An example would be to service qualified eligible applicants based on the date of their application and to serve eligible individuals based on their income. Our department has been experiencing difficulty in recruiting qualified candidates to fill the two critical administrator positions within the Division of Support Services and the Division of Vocational Rehab. Due to the stringent qualifications, the standards, and certifications that are required, not to mention the competitive salary wages that are being offered with these types of administrative positions throughout the mainland, the above-step recruitment and reclassification moratorium listed in Section 5 in Bill Number 244-34 would make it even more difficult to fill these positions. In Section 6 of Bill Number 244-34, it prohibits the filling of approved classified positions with unclassified appointments, and I'm very concerned about how it may adversely impact qualified individuals with severe disabilities that are seeking employment through a limited-term appointment within the government of Guam through the 2% hiring authority under Public Law 26-109. It is very important that a funding source be identified to help maintain the government of Guam's fiscal stability, and Bill Number 24534 would help to address the issues that are cited above. See, this is my see for allowing me the opportunity to provide this testimony for the above bills. Respectfully, Ben Servino.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions with these? If not, thank you very much. We stand in recess until 6 o'clock.